Now we're good. The buttons are all moved around when I share my screen.
Alright, so we got a call order. We got enough for Quorum. We got five of our counselor commissioners. Uh, no citizens here. And is Caleb here? Or is he showing up next month?
Uh, no, uh, he said he couldn't make it this month. I think he's out of town. Um, he didn't. I just got his info information like Friday, I think, or Monday. So when I emailed him, it was kind of a little last minute. So I wasn't expecting him, you know, I wasn't gonna hold it against him if he couldn't make it. Um, so we didn't get his info until, you know, a few days ago.
Yeah, sounds good. And Lou and Tom are back on, are still on, continuing, chugging along.
I didn't realize it was optional. I'm just kidding.
We can't stop. Nobody wants to do minutes, girl, so you're...
Gary, you're here. You want to say anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Alright, so let's go on to update the DPH. That's pretty thorough. You know, outstanding job of just describing everything.
Oh yeah, that's cool. That's all the guidelines are like that, except for with a different heading, basically. Uh, only change really was, uh, previously they were allowing you to take a mask off while in active play. Um, but that was always overruled by the being in the school part. Um, now, uh, these sports that are required to wear the mask, um, regardless of vaccination. Um, that's just a change. And then they changed some of the, like, the quarantine requirements to fall in line with the CDC. So it's at least the five days quarantine, five days with a mask. Um, other than that, everything should be pretty much the same.
Sports leagues on all this information?
Huh? Yeah, ba- basketball has it. They're the only, uh, ones running really right now. Um, they, they usually put out a spring, well, they have the past two years, so put out spring guidelines, uh, for those, the spring sports.
How's basketball going? Have they had any issues or?
I haven't heard anything, but we had a regional park and rec meeting and we were talking about, you know, COVID. And I was like, well, we haven't had any cases. And they'll, and everybody, the other directors were like, no, Ledger's had a few that we've had, like, had to, like, reschedule games. And I'm like, well, this is the first I've heard of it, so. They, they just haven't, I don't think told me that they've had any cases this year.
How are they rescheduling games without letting you know? Are they, um, rescheduling it on their own? Don't they have to schedule time? Or do you mean in the school?
Um, in the schools, so they did ask for one day to extend the timeout by an extra hour. I think what they were talking about is they're rescheduling away games with some of the other towns. Um, so they do ask, they've only asked for one, um, added hour so far. So I'm guessing most of the games are away.
Got it.
Why are the other towns were getting frustrated with the, you know, shuffle and, uh, rescheduling the games?
You're talking about schools, is, is like high school? Not necessarily the rec leagues?
Hmm.
So the rec league though is cruising along?
That was for the rec league, for the rec basketball, because they, uh, the girls, like, they collaborate.
That's right. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, Ken, I can tell you from a high school standpoint, stuff's getting rescheduled right and left. I mean...
Yeah, that's what I've seen.
Yeah, like, I had three games moved around that I was supposed to be taking photos of. And either that or they're bringing, like, freshmen up to play varsity just to keep the game in play, which is crazy too, so.
Okay. You want to get any comments on that? Guidelines?
Pretty, pretty self-evident. Why don't you kind of take a quick glance at it, so?
Okay, can I, you got, have everyone reviewed the, uh, meeting minutes in November? And get a, uh?
Yeah, I can. No issues.
Hey, was that you, uh, motioning to approve?
I'll motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second?
I'll second.
Alright, all in favor? Alright. No financial reports, right? So we're just going to CIP?
So for this, I have a PowerPoint. It's a little easier, especially with pictures. Um, so I was thinking four projects for this year. Technically, it's really three, because the fourth one is, uh, something we've, we already put in for, but it's just another year of it. Um, how I tracked it, it zooms in the way. Um, alright, so the first one's roof replacements. Um, we have a few roofs that are, well, more than a few. We have a number of roofs that are pretty bad. There's, uh, like moss, missing shingles. We have a few leaks. Um, from what I can tell, they're all over 20 years old. Only thing is Dom liked to, uh, do things and ask for forgiveness. Uh, one of those things he liked to just do was things without permits. So it's been hard to find some records sometimes of, you know, how old the roof is or if it's been redone. But if, as you can see, if it'll move. It's not like you can zoom up at the same time. It will go to the next slide. That's why, alright. Um, so we're looking at Judge Crandall Fieldhouse, which is pretty bad. Uh, the Di Maria Pavilion at Colonel Ledger Park. There's a little barbecue pavilion. Uh, the irrigation shed, and then the little soccer shed at Colonel Ledger Park. Um, and then as well as the garage, Paul's Garage. Um, also looking at the Jane Perry Pavilion at Highlands Lake. And then there's a small one there as well that needs to be redone. Um, so I mean, this, it doesn't, this one, probably out of the pictures, doesn't look too bad, but this is probably one of the worst roofs. Um, it's, uh, there's all kinds of, like, warping. Uh, we're definitely gonna need some new plywood under there. Um, the guy that gave me the quote asked how bad it was leaking. I told him it's not leaking just yet, um, that we know of. But it's probably getting pretty close. Um, in Colonel Ledger Park, the Di Maria Pavilion's got some, you know, moss growing over it. There's some leaking. Uh, you can see in the pavilion, there's water pooling. Um, that's the barbecue shack. It's, you know, kind of covered in moss. This is Paul's shed. That's really bad. There's literally grass growing on the roof. Um, those are the two sheds. I had them included in the quote. This might be an opportunity to save a little money and have this done in-house. Actually think there's shingles to the side right here. Um, not sure if it'll be enough, but because those are low to the ground, I wouldn't mind, you know, allowing, like, a boy scout or, you know, volunteer to do that. I wouldn't want them up on, like, Judge Crandall, uh, because that's a three-story building. Um, and this one's really bad. The Perry Pavilion's not in the worst shape, but needs to be done. This is this little, um, like barbecue hut, and it's literally all just nails showing through. Um, it's gonna need all new plywood, uh, two-by-fours in the front here. Um, so you took that into account. However, that's the smallest roof. Um, so we're looking at, with contingency, about fifty-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty dollars. Um, to do all those, I believe it's eight roofs, uh, in total. Um, and that's for the quote that I got from AMPM. I got one other quote. Uh, it was a little lower, but it also didn't include, uh, the garage at Blonder's. Um, so I used this because it had all of the, all the properties on.
Standard twenty-year shingles?
Huh?
That's with, like, standard twenty-year shingles?
Yeah, where's this thing? I think they're actually like, like, um...
I think they usually are fifty, but insured for twenty.
Yeah, so I think that's hurt for twenty.
A lot, a lot of the newer ones are now, like, thirty years. You get some market, they're architectural.
Oh, so it says fifty-year leak-proof roof with complete coverage of ice and water shield.
Okay. Yeah, the ice and water shield is important and expensive. Yep.
But I guess, so I guess it's required in Connecticut now. Uh, in 2018, they made it state building code, that you have to have the ice and water shield, it says. Um, so it's a thirty-year workmanship guarantee, uh, warranty for the roofing system. And that's just, you know, one company. Um, when we go out, we'll have to get three quotes, actually.
Right.
Well, now that, we'll probably have to go out to bid unless, uh, there's a, a state contract that's over fifteen thousand. Um, and then the second thing I was, uh, thinking about was, uh, we need playground wood chips. Uh, we have eight playscapes. There's, uh, over twenty-five thousand square feet of, uh, safety surfacing. Um, and then I was also thinking about some matting too, um, because we have fifteen slides and twenty-six swing seats. And those areas tend to get, uh, the wood chips displaced. Um, you know, with the swings, the kids kick them out or landing out of the bottom of the slides. Um, and, and you can kind of see where due. We haven't had wood chips. We got some when we, when I first started, um, and we haven't since. Um, you can see they're kind of worn down under the swings. Town Green really needs it bad, because I never got it before. And we have exposed concrete footings, which is a huge concern. Um, we shouldn't be seeing that, uh, anywhere on any of the playscapes. Um, because we want, uh, at least...
Fallen men, Scott?
Huh?
An irrigation problem?
Uh, no, just lack of, um, of wood chips in the playground.
Wood chips that are covering up the cement?
Yep.
That doesn't seem like that's sufficient.
Well, it's, uh, the cement footings for the equipment. So like that footing right there that I just showed you should be nine inches deep. Um, and it's, it's, it's exposed right now. Um, because you need, the wood chips, they're very picky. It has to be a certain kind of wood chips. Uh, they tested to, like, ASTM standard F-1292. And then it has to meet a certain standard to be used in the playground. Um, and it's all about the, the fall height of the equipment. So different materials have different fall heights. Um, and you need to have a surfacing that matches the highest point of your play equipment. Um, so if someone felt, you know, the highest point's ten feet, you need a safety surfacing that can, uh, take the absorption of, uh, impact up to ten feet. Um, which is a nine inch minimum when compacted. So usually twelve inches will compact down to nine, uh, inches of, uh, wood. Um, so we're gonna need about a hundred and thirty-six to a hundred and seventy-five cubic yards. I think a hundred and thirty-six is seven inches. And I'm thinking we need to go with the nine, because it's been a few years since we've got them. I mean, they do compact. Um...
Uh, is there any legal requirement for those, um, safety standards? Like, does it put, um, the town at any liability risk if we don't have?
So definitely puts us at a risk. So there's playground standards. Um, and now it might actu- might be more of a risk, because I'm a certified playground safety inspector now. And now that we know that it's not compliant, um, we should fix it, because otherwise it'll look like, you know, we're ignoring. Um, but it definitely opens us up to a lot of liability, um, because, you know, we're not meeting the, the minimum, uh, safety, uh, surface requirements for our equipment.
Yeah, okay. It'll be important to get us up to code and standard, I guess.
Yeah, it's something we should start doing every year, every other year to, because you gotta make sure to keep, uh, the depth at the proper, um, at nine inches at least. Um...
Is there any wording on, like, if we added some kind of rubber piece along the cement footings?
Actually, that's my next slide.
Kick this. Right, so eventually it's, that eight inch is gonna go down to three. And then, you know, if you're not out there inspecting, it's just not gonna happen. So, uh, if we had a rubber, you know, inch, inch and a half, two inches of rubber around those footings, it might, uh, at least give us some, buy some time.
So usually the footings are, uh, to, they usually shouldn't show like that. That's, I think, more rainwear, because it's underneath, like, the slide, it's underneath the slide, so it's not usually getting, like, traffic. Um, so I think that's just, you know, water where compacting the wood chips down enough that it's to a point. Because it's basically like dirt in that area. There's not really much, you know, as far as wood chips there. Um...
So are there any places on any of the, um, playgrounds where the water washes them white? Like, is it on a slope and they tend to travel downstream?
Um, most, so they do the borders to kind of contain the wood chips. Their model park is very wet. Uh, we're probably losing, or not so much as losing them as it, it get, um, like, moldy and they actually won't, you know, so they're sitting in water all spring. They tend to get a little moldy and then invites insects, uh, and other things that you're actually trying to avoid. And those wood chips are treated to prevent. Um, but it, it kind of sits there in like a pool. The orders kind of contain it. Um, and then when it drains, it stays in there. Um, you might lose a little bit, but we're kind of lucky that we don't have, you know, any big, uh, washouts through any playgrounds.
Good, yeah.
Um, and then, so like, you know, not only have to have the surfacing underneath, like, the playscape, it has to go through its, what they call its entire use zone. So most equipment has a six-foot use zone on the outside. So like, if there's a pole to the slide, you need to have safety surfacing six feet beyond that. Uh, some things, it's more like for tire swings and things that move, it might be double that, or the swing is depending on the height of the swing to the seat. Double that times R and plus forty-two inches is like how much space you need. Um, but one other thing I was looking, actually exactly what Ken was bringing up, is, um, to also get, in addition to wood chips, uh, some rubber matting. It can be used for ADA accessibility or also for, um, to, uh, put in high-use areas such as under slides and swings. It prevents the wood chips from getting displaced. And then actually, they don't get as compacted as quickly, um, as well. So the wood chips will last a little bit longer. Plus, it's a huge maintenance relief for Russell, because he won't have to go out every week or, you know, twice a week to rake the wood chips, uh, under the swings and slides. Um, and actually, the matting increases the fall height of the safety surfacing, uh, where there's matting too. So I think it brings it from ten to a twenty-foot fall height. Um, so it's a much better surfacing. Plus, it's a third of the cost. Um, so they have a pour-in-place rubber surface that you can get put into your playscapes, but, uh, it's very expensive. If we were to do a new one, I would recommend doing that way, because it's maintenance. It's an initial upfront cost, but it saves you long-term, because you don't have to bring in wood chips every two years. Um, and that, you don't have to worry about maintenance, you know, raking wood chips back, and the rubber keeps the same. Uh, I don't know how to go back. Um, but, so the, the rubber matting will get used. So like here, for example, there's these huge holes under the swings. And this is also a freshly installed swing set, so it does look real flat. But it'll keep the wood chips underneath the swings without getting displaced, um, and they don't get compacted as quickly. Um, we don't have to do the full ADA accessible like they do there. We could just put it onto the swing set to use as, uh, like, wear mats versus accessibility.
Are they pinned down or something?
Um, they're, they're pretty heavy, I think. So he, he said you should do, like, four, five of them tied together. There's, uh, like, a kit you get off Amazon that kind of ties them together and, uh, kind of anchors them in the ground. But I think it's mostly weight. Um, so you, like, would put the wood chips up and almost leave, like, a half an inch. And then put the matting and then level it. It kind of sweep over onto the mat to fill in the edges, so there's no trip hazard.
Sounds good.
So for wood chips, I went on the high end with the number of cubic yards, just because I think we're gonna need more than we typically will if we get on a regular schedule. Um, and then I put in for forty-one mats, because that's one for every swing and slide. We'll see. We might have to, you know, put multiple on a swing, so maybe we don't get all of them, but at least we can kind of, um, start implementing it. And then I'll save some of the, the costs on wood chips downline. Oh. How do I go back? Let me see. Um, and then, so we're looking about just over eight thousand for that and then mats.
The mats are just seventy-nine cents each?
No, um, nine dollars, seventy-nine dollars. And then they're shipping with handling too, so I'm not sure what, what that'll be. Um, so the contingency will kind of cover that, because I don't see the wood chip cost going up more than it already is.
Is this, are these prices a lot higher than they were last year?
Um, not, depends on what we're looking at. The wood chip prices actually are, were pretty stable. They're the same as what I got last year. Because I think it was in the twenty-three dollar, uh, range. It's the, what they're hitting you is like, if we order the mats, it's the shipping cost that we never had before. Like, when we ordered field paint, usually I would just order field paint and get charged for the pallet. Now it's like the pallet plus like a four-hundred-dollar shipping fee, because of the freight is a mess right now with COVID.
Yeah.
And then the third project is the middle school practice field lighting. Um, we currently have six poles. Uh, they're all mounted on wooden crossbars that are rotted out. Uh, we know this, because one of them blew off the pole during a windstorm. Um, so we had to actually get the cherry picker out there to, you know, detach the light, because it was hanging from the wire. Um, and we found out that the crossbars are all rotten. Um, and then there's also one additional fixture that we, isn't even working at all, that we don't know what the issue is. So here's the one that's missing completely. And then this one's not turning on. Um, so that's two out of the six poles that aren't working. Um, and then the other poles, the, the bars have to be, uh, rotted out. Um, so rather than just replace those two, it makes sense just to go all LEDs with all of them. And then, because if they replace the crossbar and then something, when they put it, the light back on, if it's not working, then they have to go back out again with the cherry picker. Um, and then labor. So the cost could add up pretty quickly. So it makes sense kind of just to replace all six poles versus do two poles and then all the crossbars. Um, because we don't know what issues we'll have putting those old lights back on.
What's that S2 line? What is that?
I couldn't figure out what that part was. That's what it is on his, his workup. Um, I didn't get a chance to talk to him today, because that's what it says on the, like, the proposal. I was able to look up, you know, the SKU numbers for everything else. Um, but that was pulling up a bunch of different things, and I didn't know which one it was supposed to be.
You're still holding the lights or something?
Yeah, it might be like, it could be the crossarm maybe, the crossarms.
Okay.
Um, we're looking at...
We're gonna replace not just the poles and, and crossbars, crossarms, but the entire, all of the actual lights as well, correct? Is that what we're looking at?
So we're not gonna replace the poles. We're gonna keep the same six wooden poles and then put new LED light fixtures up. Um, that will save us in maintenance, because the, the bulbs are starting to go. They're starting to be obsolete for the metal halide.
Got it. That was gonna be my next question, is what's like the functional life of LED lights? Because I feel like we put those up not too, too long ago, but I, I might be misremembering. It's also been a few years, so.
At the middle, I thought we did the LED lights over at, um, Purdy and whatnot.
Yeah, maybe that's what I was thinking of. Okay.
The school that still has the high...
Got it. Okay, makes sense.
If I had to guess, I would say those are probably the older set of lights that we have, if not the oldest. Um, just, they're in rough shape, um, compared to everything else we have.
Okay, thanks.
Um, so looking at, yeah, fifty, I think I rounded it to like fifty-one, nine oh six. Hmm. Alright, and then the last one's just another year for the, uh, crack filling for the tennis and basketball courts. Because, uh, next year will be the last five thousand to go in for that. Which will be perfect, because we'll do it in the spring and then we'll have another ten thousand. Alright, so that's, I guess, the, kind of the projects to go in for this time, because like, alternative projects. So I know, uh, Don put in for the Clark and Purdy lights. He only put in, I want to say, like, forty thousand. Um, and I met with the lighting guys, um, and they really didn't want to add the three poles on the other side, because they didn't think it makes sense to go with an obsolete light, you know, or to do vice versa and put three new poles of LED lights and then have the metal halide across the field and then at a different level for the poles. So I guess the pole height's not tall enough. Um, the bulbs are, we got a bunch of them out. Uh, I got like a proposal for them to do Clarkson-Purdy to switch it over to LED lights. Um, we came up with a plan to, because right now, I think Clarkson has like six or seven poles on its own. Um, we're looking at doing six poles total for both fields. So two poles on one, two poles in the middle of the two fields, and then two poles on the other field. So the two middle poles will actually shine both directions, so it saves us money on poles. Um, so we'd only put up two poles in the middle and it would, those two poles would light both fields, uh, from the center. Um, but that project is way out of our, our range for right now. Um, we only have forty thousand for, that Don put away. Well, it was like forty-five, but we used five on the, um, the breaker, getting the system ready to accommodate lights. Um, but they're thinking that might be a better, uh, than going with three additional metal, metal halide lights on the side of the field that doesn't have them yet. Um, but that's something we can talk about throughout the year, because we don't have enough money in the capital right now to move forward with that just yet. So that's a big cost, three hundred thousand. And that doesn't include labor. And then we still have the four and five-year-old playscape at Donahue on the ARPA. And then in the future, we should look at the Town Green playscape getting replaced. I think that's probably our oldest playscape. Um, I think it even has, like, sand as the safety surfacing right now, which is, that's a mess for maintenance, and it's not the best surfacing either. Um, yes, so that's like the capital stuff.
I think these are all worthy, uh, needs at this point.
And the Clark-Purdy lights, that's different, those last three. Just looking for those, looking at those four for this year.
So do you need a motion to accept these four as our priority, Scott?
Yeah, I think, yeah, the motion improves, uh, these, I don't know how to word it, these as our four capital plant, uh, projects.
Plan, planned capital projects.
For... Three, yeah, I, for that.
Yeah, last year's document was titled, uh, FY twenty-twenty-two CIP requests, so, if you want to use the same one.
I put on motion... I put a motion to approve this FY twenty-three capital improvement plan project as presented, sound good?
Perfect.
Did we get a second?
So since I have this, the last year's handy. Did we complete all of those from last year? The uh the replacement parks and rec truck, Highlands Lake improvements, Erickson Park improvements, Christie Hill Park improvements.
Not yet. They're in works, so they don't start till July first. July first to July first, uh actually I got the contract to order the truck interstate. Uh I got the proposal for the lights for Christie Hill. Um so that's looking like, I want to say March or April, just because of the lead time on uh supplies is uh pretty long right now with the pandemic.
Says tree removal in various parks?
That's, we started that, we're taking a few, few trees down.
I feel like that would be like ongoing.
Yeah, there's a certain, there's certain things we want to tackle though too, like we want to clear the waterfront uh at Erickson. Um so we were waiting because we figured that'd be easier to do, you know, in the winter. Uh we don't have all the green there. Have to cut through as far as the brush. Next is top dress. Just, I didn't do a director's report, so I kept this on because it's a special meeting, we can't really get off topic. Mike did uh top dress uh Depta. He's, he went out with about half the loam and we're covering the rest up. It's getting, it was getting a little cold, so he's also going to hold off on the seeding and do the dormant seeding uh probably in March, once the ground thaws out a little bit. Um and then we're thinking that might be beneficial too because we won't worry about any uh seed washing away uh over the winter as well. Um and we won't have to go out and cover it like we were planning initially, um with like hay or something like that to keep the seed down. Then he's also thinking it'll help because when he'll, if he waits, he'll let the the dirt will settle a little bit and then he'll go out and spread again because we have more looms still there. Um so he'll go out and spread a second time as we get closer to the spring and then do the oversea, uh the dormant seed as well. I mean, this the cedar will help uh break up any clumps of dirt. So if any of the loom got a little wet, it might be some chunks and the the spikes from the cedar will actually break break that up. But he want, that's why he wants to wait till March because if he does it now, it's getting cold, it might be frozen a- after the few days we've had, so.
Sounds like a good plan. Alright, everyone saw the meeting schedule, everyone's okay with the third week? Okay, need a motion for that?
I'm moved.
My second.
All in favor? New business, so it's just the budget meeting schedule, blah blah blah, draft budget and working schedule. Want to just go right to the budget?
Yeah, does anything else more just informational? So, I mean, as far as the lines that we were responsible for, we're down what? Eighty-five dollars total, um because if they do uh the salaries, that's my guess as to what the salary increases will be. Um just by the percentage. But finance and um HR will do that separately.
Yeah, I looked at this quickly, but the senior, that's still separate, correct?
At the moment, yeah, it's still its own budget. That, hold on, I'll have to talk to mayor about that as to when he sees that merging. There'll probably have to be an ordinance change as well when that happens because there's two different commissions and uh each ordinance says uh separate commissions approve their own budget, so. Still some things that need to be ironed out. This is probably better. So I mean, we saved a few bucks on that copier, we're going to get a new copier. A new lease soon, so that'll save us a few, that saved what? Just sixty bucks or saved a hundred and five, but we went up twenty dollars in general maintenance because the porta potty uh contracts sixty-two dollars a unit when it was sixty-one dollars and ten cents before. So we went up ninety cents a porta potty per month. Other than that, everything should be exactly the same.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
So Myrec is the the website, right? Did you mention that they were, there was going to be like a new version of the website?
There, I'm not sure if it'll be the website, they're doing a bunch of things. One of them was with the website, we like, they were switching our domain host recently and things like that because it'll be more robust and they can do a lot more. That's a little beyond me, I I kind of, I started speaking another language, so I passed them off to the uh IT department.
Um so that, but that's not going to impact the the budget for it?
No, um, we're actually, I think we're in the most expensive like all-inclusive package now. Because I think we looked at it and it was like, for what we had versus getting everything, it was like a hundred dollars extra a year or something like that because we had so many of the modulators and then they had a plan with all of them. So I think last year we went to the all-inclusive because it also allowed us, you know, to use the senior center modules and stuff. Um we needed one modular for Partner X, so by doing that, we unlocked everything, um which actually helped.
It looks like the electricity went down a little bit?
Kinda, so they cut that, finance cut that last year, I believe. So we put in for the thirty thousand five hundred, but they reduced it at the finance meeting, I think down to twenty-seven thousand on the history.
That's just uh for using pure energy, right? It's not necessarily maintenance of lights or fixing items.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's that's just the electric bills alone and then our, the water bills are in there too uh for uh just convenience center, I believe we have. It's everywhere else as well. Yeah, because if like something were to go wrong, electric, that would come out of general maintenance for the electric and out of our electric and plumbing.
Any other comments on the?
Make a motion to approve the budget as presented.
All in favor? Very good. Any other comments from anyone else uh for the meeting or posed ideas or?
I will say actually, Scott, yesterday, two days ago, there was someone with a small uh tent setup over by the sawmill and actually they were out on the ice with tip-ups. I don't know if we've got not safe for skating signs up or anything, but I personally had to question whether or not that ice was thick enough for anybody to be on it, but just a heads up.
Yeah, Russell, we talked about it this morning, actually they're sitting out, he's off tomorrow, so he'll go out probably first thing Thursday. But he brought the sandwich boards, uh two of them back to put, we're going to rearrange in the state, like stay off the ice. I mean, he's going to put one at Highlands and one at Sawmill because we did notice, you know, he's like, people are out there and a half's frozen, the other half's not.
Yeah, I mean, it was wide open on one end and they're out with tip-ups on the other end, so, okay.
Is skating ever allowed there? Is skating ever allowed on the on the lakes?
Um I guess it has in the past, but when it gets frozen enough to get out there. Since I've been here, I haven't been able to hang a sign that said it's safe to go out.
Usually not cold, like it, we usually don't get cold long enough for the ice to be thick enough for safe skating, because it needs to be what, a a few, couple inches thick at least, right?
And then I guess you're supposed to go out and drill too to check the depth. Uh we were talking about it Friday at a regional Parker Rec meeting, someone was asking how other towns confirm.
I mean, it's rare that it's that thick anymore. When I was a kid, yeah, but not not anymore.
We used to skate down at the swamp over Lamp Town Extension on the dirt road.
That's not that deep though, right? You just fall into mud.
Yeah, pretty pretty much, we'd like bottle rockets off of there too.
Now you could almost skate at the um middle school, Lake Ledgers. This is skating, there's a couple skating rinks locally, they put up outside, that's safer if it, if they fall through that ice, they're not going anywhere.
Alright, that was it for the uh agenda, right?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Alright, guys.
Hey, you guys, appreciate everybody taking the time tonight.
Are you going to need, um, so you're going to just go for the January meeting with the mayor, you just, you can just do that?
Yeah, and then they're asking, I guess, um for the finance meeting not to, for us not to bring deposits with us, they said for just the department head to attend and then everybody else to attend virtually. Like even like, you know, Monica would usually go with me, they said, leave her and just I, just me show up in the chambers and everybody else zoom in uh because of the cases.
It's a good idea.
Yep, that makes sense.
Alright, guys, have a great night.
Good night, everyone.
Have a good night.